All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is she doing better than mine?
Yeah.
She can walk.
Yeah, no, she's doing good. I mean, I don't know.
Who might not see him anymore.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Congratulations.
Yep. Okay, just give my father a buzz.
Do we have to write the motion to open the meeting?
We don't have a public hearing.
We don't have a public hearing, so it's just.
No, just that, I mean.
Yeah, the meeting is now open. And.
I can put steps.
Here Charlie, guess who's in charge now?
You're gonna ruin that job in a hurry.
I'll abdicate to Charlie.
You've got a busy night.
Must be my lucky night, right?
It is.
How's everyone doing tonight?
We've done the pledge and.
Even better, I like it.
Ready to get started.
Perfect. Exactly.
First on our agenda is Lori.
Good evening Lori, how's it going?
Good, how are you Charlie?
Doing well, thank you.
Excellent.
I'll turn it over to you.
Really all I'm here for is I sent you a link with regard to green communities and the state has approached Templeton about becoming a green community. And really what that involves is. And I don't want people to misunderstand because it's not residents, it's within our own government lowering our, you know, cost by twenty percent using updated vehicles when we have the opportunity. The way they describe it is the green communities division provides grants, technical assistance and local support from regional coordinators to help municipalities, municipalities reduce energy use and costs by implementing clean energy products in municipal buildings, facilities and schools. So, right now we're in a pretty good position because, you know, the school, the new school that's being built will be completely up to code and be using more green technologies and things like that. Our highway department is purchasing a vehicle which will be much more economical than some of the vehicles they're using right now. But to become a green community, there's a lot of criteria that we have to meet and some of those things are. The as to right, meaning less than a year's time to approve a permit for things like solar farms and windmills and alternative energy. I think we probably already do that, but it'll be changes to bylaws and things like that. They'll also be looking at, and I believe you have this all in your packet, and I did mail it out at some point in time to you. They're also looking at expedited permitting process. So, these are things that the state has to have in order for us to move forward in becoming a green community. And what we need to do is make sure that our boards don't have any, you know, strong aversions to it, that we're all on board for the same thing. And I don't know if you had a chance to read some of this information and if you have any.
I've gone over a little bit of it and actually I bumped into Senator Goby last night.
Yep.
And her and I actually discussed a little bit of it briefly in passing. And she gave me some information and I'm gonna be getting in touch with someone from her office to try to get some additional information and move forward with some of that as well.
We can actually have an informational meeting too where the representatives come and speak to you as a board. That's not a problem. Karen Chapman is the representative for this area and she'd be more than happy to come and speak to you and give you more information. For someone like you Kristoff, the stretch code would be implemented here.
It's not for somebody like me, it's for somebody like Dennis or John or Tim. The problem with the stretch code is it makes the cost of construction go up. So, that would be my concern about this is that on a thirty, three hundred and fifty foot view, you know, they want federal monies or so they make Massachusetts look X in terms of being green communities, X amount so they can siphon federal monies. Then they get the federal monies, then they can siphon it to communities. That's all well and good, but in order to do that, they put the burden on the individual taxpayer which in a, which in a lower. They make laws that are a burden to the people that do the living and the dying and the working in the community. And in a working community like Templeton, I don't know if we can do anything that increases the cost of something like residential construction. That's a concern. I don't know, I haven't read through it in detail, but I did just see the stretch energy code and like stretch energy code is like Clinton, like Carlisle and Acton and, you know, Boxborough and Littleton and they've, you know, they've all adopted this thing because they can afford to do it. You know, it's everyone who lives there is making a ridiculous amount of income. So, I mean, the average house that's built is a six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar home. And then, yeah, I mean, if that community can check off a box from Massachusetts so they can get federal monies, that gives us an opportunity to get some other grant monies through it. I just wouldn't wanna go, I wouldn't wanna be penny wise and pound foolish and say, how much money could we potentially get as a community? I see that as a good and if they're giving it away for free, I see that as a good. But if it's gonna be at the cost of, we can't afford to live in our own town anymore. That would be a concern, I.
Okay, so that's something that we need to have somebody come speak more.
What do you think? Or you do not know enough to have an opinion?
As far as that code goes, I am not versed at all, but our building inspector commissioner Hanks is very versed in it.
He's not intimidated by it?
No.
Yeah.
No, in fact, he was okay with it as far as, he works with it in Townsend too.
Yep.
So, I, he can speak more clearly on that and we can, as I said, have Karen Chapman come in and speak on it.
But for the overall thing, are you in favor of being a green community or do you not know yet?
I don't see any reason not to move forward and at least look at the criteria and see how much of it we can check off and move forward with. I mean, informationally wise, there's no reason not to keep looking at it.
Sure, how much money would we be able to potentially get?
Between probably the first year a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand to do work on buildings and.
And our budget's like three million for the year or something?
Well, this is, this is just for, this is completely separate from anything else. It would be specific.
Earmark, we can't put it in the general fund, it's earmarked for engines, trucks.
Correct.
Light bulbs, LEDs, you know, okay. Okay, does it go along with the right, I sit on the ag board too? And that will be their question, is this a farm, is this a support of farming kind of, does it go along well with, with farming or does it work against it?
I don't think it would work against it. I don't know how it would work against it, it's simply, and again, it's more for the buildings of the government and vehicles and it shouldn't affect the farmers, I wouldn't think in any way, shape or form.
But how would it increase cost of building, like permitting fees or just the overall?
I was speaking to a very specific thing, the stretch energy code, so maybe I said too much, but the stretch energy code is just, we just changed the building codes in Massachusetts again in the last six months. And we've adopted a code that's close to the national code because there's this general idea that if all of the communities in the United States have the same code, it'll be easier. The problem is, if you live in California, you have earthquakes, if you live in Alaska, it's negative whatever degrees. So, you get something like here where, Tim, you wanna build a garage, you gotta dig a four foot frost wall. But we haven't had frost down four feet ever in Massachusetts. You really only need thirty inches. But because they have frost four feet in Alaska, you're spending an extra ten percent on concrete. And so, right now, the new, the new building code has a, again, an increased energy part to it. So, we're building houses in Massachusetts that are the most airtight houses in the history of the world. They're so airtight that they're not healthy, it's like living in a plastic bag. You have to have a by code, an air.
An outside air.
Outside, you're gonna have a.
Circulation.
Literally, part of the code says you can have your basement door open to meet the code. You build this house and then leave the basement door open with a fan in the bathroom, it's kinda exceeded common sense. So, the stretch energy code just adds additional burden to the contractor or to the homeowner when they wanna build new construction. How much new construction do we have here? I mean, no one can afford it anymore, really, so people are taking old houses and renovating them, but. But it's a factor, I, that's just one little piece that I know something about. But if Hanks knows a way, you know, there's, there are different ways around the same mountain, so he might say, you know what Kristoff, there's X, Y and Z and I'm well versed in it and I'm sympathetic to the citizen and he could help, you know, maybe he can help more with it. But you get a guy like the building inspector and gardener on it, you know, or I shouldn't say that, but you could get, you get, some building inspectors could use that as a tool to unnecessarily kind of choke people trying to build a house. Or renovate. Because the new codes go into effect if you affect, if you do a renovation that affects more than thirty-three percent of your house, which is up to the discretion of the building official, so.
So, you have concerns about the stretch energy code and moving forward, we can have somebody that can speak to it?
Yeah, I'd love to hear what, I love Hanks, I mean, I'd love to hear what his opinion is, I might be wrong, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
It adds cost to building, it doesn't seem to make a lot of, a lot of sense.
But if the overall program has, you know, benefits that outweigh the negatives.
Well, it has benefits to the town, maybe the building structures and so forth, but it doesn't help the residents.
But I think that. But this is, Kristoff, I mean, we built within the last five years. And the cost to heat this new house compared to the cost to heat the house I built fifteen years ago, it's amazing how much cheaper it is to heat this house. Because it was built five years ago. And if, if those, those regulations even get, get stricter or get better and it's that much less again to heat your house and to cool your house. I mean, my, my heating and air conditioning costs are down drastically from my previous house built fifteen years ago.
I don't disagree, but once that's mandated on, on someone, she's a waitress, he's a mechanic, they don't have the income that you and Janice have, you know what I mean? And if it's a mandate, it's a law, I mean, I'm a mechanic and my wife's a waitress, like, we'll burn wood, we can't afford to. We can't afford to live in a place that's that nice, I mean, it's a nice idea.
Yeah.
But we can't, you can't afford to build a house anymore, so.
Especially if you're renovating, it's even, I'm assuming cheaper to put a lot of these things in place when it's brand new. But if you're trying to retrofit a house, I would assume that would be even more expensive.
It affects the cost of both, but if you came to me Charlie tomorrow and said, hey, should I, I'd really like to build a new place on my parents' property, I'd say, it's gonna be cheaper to buy an old place and renovate it.
Really?
Yeah.
Really? So, I will make it my priority to look further into that and provide you with more information. I will talk to Commissioner Hanks and I will make arrangements to get in touch with Karen Chapman, who's the representative and set something up for an informational meeting.
And I think Dennis has a quick, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have some concerns also about expediting the process by reducing the regulations to, that are required. Regulations are actually in place to help protect members of the community and the community itself. And by eliminating them, we don't give enough time to really do the necessary research of the consequences of some of these projects.
A year?
They're talking less than a year.
Right.
I would hope we could do our job in less than a year.
Well. No, but.
I know this always happens.
And you know, it does take sometimes, you know, more than a year to fulfill the requirements.
Okay.
And to reduce or eliminate those requirements, just in hopes of expediting the process.
And I don't think it's the goal to eliminate or reduce, it's just to.
Speed up the, or at least to keep the process moving.
If you can get the process, the intent, to keep it moving so that we keep people interested.
Keep you focused in building or doing something.
Correct.
If you bury them in red tape, you're not gonna be able to do it.
Does this mean a lot more work for the town employees, like what you do and what Carol does and?
Um, no. It's, there would be a designated person to be a liaison with the state and to work with the system for the application and things like that, but I don't think it would be.
Once it's done, once the application is done, how much work is the grant writing?
It's all through the state, the state does most of the work.
Oh.
So.
Have we talked to any of the other boards?
I went before conservation last night and they were receptive to move forward and just look at it. I don't see any harm in getting more information.
Yeah.
If you don't.
I don't see harm in it.
No, I mean, obviously.
I would like to hear more about it.
I would too.
Yeah, definitely, no, I agree.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll make a plan to actually have the people who run it come and talk.
I mean, we could do more of like a all boards, you know, type situation to get, you know, obviously as many, you know, people, inputs and questions as we can, so.
Is this through MRPC or?
It is partially through MRPC.
When we did our hearing at the high school for the master plan, they spoke briefly about this part.
There would, for an informational meeting, we would have a person, I would ask for a person from the state, MRPC and as I said, Karen Chapman is actually, she, I think she works for MRPC now, so. She's their principal planner. So, and she's very knowledgeable. So, I'll try and set something up, I'll talk to Carter on Monday and we'll see if we can't get a meeting together with the boards.
It would impact zoning too, you have to actually designate areas of your town for generating facilities, research and development, manufacturing of alternative and renewable energy.
Where are you reading, John?
Just on page three. I'm just kinda, I didn't look at it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just kind of reading, just briefly through it.
Yeah, I gave, I actually gave you what the criteria is.
The town would have to agree, never mind the boards, the towns would have to vote on a zoning change. We couldn't get them to agree to highway business on Route two A.
We'll talk about that next. If you don't mind.
I'm not quite sure how that, you know.
The other thing I'm seeing on the front page, benefits of being a green community, says promote energy efficient building construction that drives the market. Drives the market for better built and lower cost homes. I'd be interested, I would be interested to ask the question, how does this help a lower cost home? Because I think a lower cost home would be great, I would be in big support of that.
And I guess the other thing is I didn't read through this, I'm curious, how about renewable energy? Because the municipality we have, I'm not sure is overly friendly with regards to.
Well, the state announced today that they wanna be what, completely renewable energy by twenty fifty?
I'm not sure Templeton, I'm not sure Templeton like.
The state of Massachusetts.
Always fond of net metering.
No, Templeton Light doesn't.
Right.
Right, so I just, it is other.
They pretty much said that the one solar field will probably be the last, the one and only major solar field in Templeton.
What's your business, it's different than a.
Mr. Driscoll was in the initial meeting, so when.
That was just, I mean, that was a few years ago that he had said that.
Yeah, no, because I had talked to him about, you know, my hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt hours a year. And I know I would need.
Try shutting some lights off once in a while.
Yeah.
What do you think, Mr. Machete? What do you think?
Not.
You're not thinking or you're not for it?
No, I don't know, I think the big thing is, is gonna be the expense of the homeowner. I mean, if we make rules that they can't afford to bill, they're almost getting, it's almost that way now.
Well, we can certainly explore that and have somebody come up with.
It's easy to say, but.
Yeah, and I am no expert, I can't talk about it because I don't know enough about that part of it.
Maybe it's me, but a hundred thousand dollars for all that change, it doesn't seem like a significant, to me.
It's a significant amount of money?
Yeah, I mean, someone said it was millions, you know, and it would change the, the shape of the town, I'd be like, well, you know, we kinda suck it up, but a hundred thousand dollars, I'd use light to find.
Okay, and these are the concerns I will bring to Carter.
Yeah.
Well, he's also a matter of.
I'll look over this, you know, more.
Yeah.
And feel free to contact the office at any point in time, we know we're available, so.
Okay.
I'm kinda curious, how come this goes through the Board of Health and not the Sleutman's office?
It is through the Sleutman's office because we're development services. I am bringing it before conservation and the planning boards because we fall into the same.
Okay, just curious, just.
No problem. And since Sean brought it up. The highway business change, your chairman would like to have that on the warrant again. And I don't know if you're prepared for that to happen again and you might wanna have some informational meetings for, I, I, I'm not sure if it's ready to go again.
It should go back, well, it should go back on the way it was in the special town, special time meeting?
Fall, we'll call it fall.
Fall, okay, fall time, it should go back on. There wasn't enough people at the meeting. When I say not, I don't mean us, not enough residents at the meeting where I think.
We never have that.
Well, I think we'll have that more at the regular meeting and then we can have some information, but really, it's, you know, it was Steve. I think it was Steve not liking the idea that.
There's still be there.
His cousin.
Steve who, Jerry?
Yeah, that his cousin might be able to do something with that sliver next to your dad's place, I mean, I, that's the impression I got. Were you at the meeting? I didn't go, but I.
I didn't go.
Yeah. The impression I got was Steve was the one who just kinda said, you know.
Yeah.
Because I mean, really, we have highway business.
Right.
And then I think people were also concerned that there are many people on the board that have property.
They're still on the board.
They have property, I mean, it doesn't, I have property on that spot too, it doesn't benefit me either way, I don't think. I don't think it does, nothing I'm aware of.
I think it's something that we as a board would have to maybe discuss again.
Yeah.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Because I think if you're going to, and this is just my opinion, if you're gonna put it on again, I think you need to have a couple of informational meetings to get people in to hear about what you're actually planning, will do a little better advertising, get it out to the people before you go. Due diligence so they know what you're wanting to do. I don't think it was.
Well, we had, the problem is, we had public hearings, we had public hearings about it, nobody, nobody shows up.
Shows up.
And that might be our fault for not getting it out there far enough, I mean, advertising, the garden news maybe isn't sufficient.
Well, what I don't like about it is any of these projects. I don't like the idea, you bring something up, you have the public meeting, nobody shows up, you all say, you voted in. If you don't get it in, you bring it back up.
Right.
If, what you're doing, how many times you can bring it back up?
Right.
We did that at a school, a police station.
Right.
It's like, no matter what you say, we're gonna come back. Should you say, maybe we shouldn't come back for a year, I can't see coming back three, four months. We already, the people voted, they voted down, don't you respect that? I mean, I'm talking.
Yeah, I mean, in this particular, so I, so I understand, but I think so as a board member, is to the benefit of this town and tax dollars.
Have you?
Well, we represent the people, right, that's why we're here, they elected us.
Yeah, but they showed you, they told you.
No, I know, but I'm just.
You call them, you're almost like thinking they're angry, well, you voted no, we gotta go back, I hate that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think.
Give it a little space.
I, I think we should put the best of our opinion.
Well, until we get it.
I do, I tend to agree with Frank on that, except for the fact that at the Fall Town meeting, there were not many people there and it was kind of a one sided discussion.
Whose fault was that, the people?
Well, it is, you're right about that too.
Government works for those that show up, I get it Frank, but that's, it's just, you know, it just makes good solid sense.
Okay, say we don't get it the next time, bring it back up? Will you stop?
I don't know.
Never stop? I mean, I just.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're insulting the people. They said they didn't want it, they didn't want it. Oh, well, we think you should have it, we shove it down your throat. I mean, I'm just looking in general.
I hear what you're saying.
I agree with that part too Frank, to be honest.
I think it wouldn't hurt to just discuss it at some, you know, one of our meetings and see if we even decide that we wanna move forward with it. We can always say, it's not something that we want to bring back up and we're gonna.
This is just an outline of timeline.
Does this, does this exist or is this something you created?
No, that exists.
What is this?
That, that's a, that's a basic guideline on when you wanna do an article and, you know, when did you advertise it and.
Is this going forward or?
Yes, yes, I'm just suggesting it as that Carol and I will be working on it this week to pull the dates from the last time that the article went on when it was advertised and, you know, pull that information together so that when something like this comes up again, we have a clear picture of how it happened.
Okay.
So, that, that's all.
So, this is something you're recommending to anybody who wants to do, do anything and this is a standard form that matches other communities?
It is.
It's like a suggested.
It's a state form.
Boiler plate, it's a state form, okay.
But it probably is nice to just have it all in one place so you can look at it and say.
It's your cover.
Hey, this is, yeah.
Is there anything about posting it online on here?
No, but we certainly can post it online, it can be on the website.
So, even the state's still behind on reality?
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you Frank, I mean, I wasn't at the meetings, I don't know what the representation was, but I, I, I think some, I think what we have down there, what our intent for the thing is, is a good one. Is that we have.
I just think you need a little more time.
The problem is on where we, we did it the way we did it because there's businesses running up and down the whole street.
That's what I want when Tim's, I'll, I'll, that's a.
We have to play the same rules. Whichever way we play is okay.
But we have to keep playing the same way.
But I would.
Tim, what I was saying is that, I agree with the, what, what we were trying to do is that we've got businesses right now that can't operate, you know, and it doesn't seem fair when there's, you know, other areas right there that are zoned properly and having other businesses and so, I, I agree with our intent. But I, I, I don't disagree with Frank that, you know, that that's a bad habit this town's gotten into of just, you know, whatever, whatever some, whatever some special interest group wants, they just keep come bringing it back, bringing it back, bringing it back, bringing it back until it gets passed.
I agree with that Kristoff, I agree that there are some businesses and some things that if there are businesses here and businesses here, one is zoned, one, we should consider that. But I, go ahead Dennis.
No, I can see that for two A, but the balls are going, that's quite so much in favor of. It's more of a residential area, so.
Didn't you vote for it? Yes, yes.
I, I did, but no, I have regrets about that.
What was your point, Tim? No, I, I, I agree with what you said, I think I agree with what you said and I think, I think we should consider looking at it again. And at least discuss it again.
I mean, I viewed it as really just kind of a, you know, a housekeeping issue that, I think in the general, in the original zoning plan, it probably should have been mixed use commercial and it was just, I mean, you know, first time that the board had ever done it and, you know, so I didn't look at it, I don't look at it as trying to change, you know, reinvent the wheel. It's really just a housekeeping matter that, I mean, we've done this before on other parts of zoning in the town.
There are four major arteries that run through this town. They have speed limits that are, you know, fifty, forty, five and fifty miles an hour, they should be, they're not residential areas. Two A is not a residential area, I don't care what part of it you're on.
Right.
And there are businesses that run up and down two A that are, hey, just like I said, it doesn't impact me, I'm grandfather, you're grandfather, everybody's grand, so it doesn't impact anybody in the board. It's not like Walmart's asking to build a, you know, a.
I don't think they'll have.
A, you know, on my swamp. You know what I mean? So, but I just think it makes good sense and there are people that have come to us, presented to us, you know, to the board, that we've had to like say no to.
Right.
You know, I'm thinking of the place down, I don't even know the name of it, after the, just before Route two. That whole thing.
The Old Chetwood?
Yeah, no, that's a hole, that's a tragedy itself.
Demers used to have this place.
Yeah, but you know, the, I forget her name, but she came, they wanted to open up there. Yeah, but you know, the, uh, the, how do you, I forget her name, but she came, they wanted to open up their garage there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's like, well, why wouldn't, you know, but they couldn't. We had to say no.
Right.
I mean, what a, what a shame.
Just an observation, when I was at town meeting and that was brought up. It looked like it was gonna pass until Mr. Drury brought up how he was misinformed, how his neighbors, his whole group was there, was misinformed. And I think it would have passed without that negativity being aired out.
Because he doesn't like his cousins.
Well, yeah.
Across the street, you know, I mean, no, I truly, no, I'm sorry.
It just came down to that small group of people, you know?
That's what it comes down to. He doesn't like that.
You know? And he claimed he was misinformed.
No, I understand that.
He's not going away.
Yeah, but I wasn't there.
Yeah, I wasn't either.
But I attended both, I think you had two hearings on the proposal.
Yep.
And I, I told Steve that, says, well, they had two hearings. Well, I was misinformed, I was never, you know, unless you personally invite him to a meeting, he's gonna keep claiming that he's misinformed.
But you think that people that would be infected would come to the meeting?
You would hope, but that's a problem we have in general anyways. No one comes. We sit here, but.
Right.
We got a big crawl tonight.
Yeah.
Big as usual.
No, but even when we have the public hearings, you know, no one, no one shows up.
Hey, I show up to public hearings, right?
Yes, you do.
So.
I didn't go cuz it doesn't imply to me.
So, would it, would it be?
Maybe it does, I don't know.
So, would it be, I don't know if we're voting on this thing, but would, would it, would it, would it, would it sort of suit all of us if we said, let's talk about it again and let's bring it up again, but not at the next town meeting? So, that, to Frank, to Frank's point, I agree with Frank. It's a little silly to be just doing it over and over again. It's a little rude. Um, and this is something that I think we all basically agree on. I, I don't know what our vote was, but I think we all basically agree on it as being a good thing to present properly to the town. There's no rush, they're not going anywhere.
Right.
So, why don't we give it six months or a year and then, would, would you go for that idea, Mr. Machete?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think any situation shouldn't be brought up a few months after it was voted down.
Yeah.
I mean, because you're making mockery of the people. We voted no and now you're telling us you gotta vote on it again.
Yeah.
Give us some time, give us some rest or research it, give us some time and present it differently, but not just who says no.
I agree.
About thirty days, we're gonna bring it back up. I think that's.
Does that, does that make sense to you, Tim?
Yeah, I think we should absolutely keep it on the agenda. I think we should do a little bit more research on it ourselves and discuss it again. There's a meeting in spring.
Yeah.
Then is there another meeting in the fall?
When is the closing date?
Maybe we go back for the fall meeting as opposed to.
That seems reasonable. I think we'd all be in agreeance.
I think that seems reasonable.
You see, you agree with that, Dennis? You agree with that approach?
But if you brought in the economic development committee to a board, you know, you brought some different, you know, perspective on the idea.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss it.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
So, that just your view, say, hey, look, if these people are saying this is gonna work if we do this.
Nope, certainly wouldn't hurt, so.
You're on board with that, Charlie?
Yep.
Can we, can we, can I make a motion that would, can I move that or?
I don't know if we need to. I mean, I, you certainly can make a motion. I think it's.
Or do we just record it in the minutes that that's what we decided?
I think we recorded it.
Well, no one's really, I, I mean, Perks asked us to consider doing it, so I don't think we have to make a motion for.
Right. I think we meant it, that, that we discussed it, that it was agreed to by the, by the board, that we continued the discussions. And, and we considered bringing it before the town again in the fa- on the fall town meeting warrant.
Yep, okay.
Up this year.
You know, another thing too, all these businesses we're talking about, I know, eight, four, or five, they're still operating right now as a business. They're all residential, they're all operating as a business. The only thing they don't have out there is a sign.
Right.
Cadillac's running, Demers is running, they're all running as a business, as commercial, just that they can't put a sign up. So, they're still doing.
Yeah, and they can't advertise and they can't, and there's a whole bunch of.
Yeah, but again, they're running it as.
But they're not gonna go away. If it waits a year, then they're gonna still be there.
Yeah.
And then we.
Then they can put a sign up, but I mean, they're still operating right now.
Yeah.
Homeless businesses.
I, I just think it was an oversight from the original zoning and I. I think we pro- we did not do a good enough job apparently representing it.
Maybe rushed into it too quick.
Actually, from the original.
We didn't rush into it. We had, we had several meetings.
Well, we dragged our feet to one or the other.
Yeah, I don't think we rushed into it. We talked about it over and over again. We, we had public hearings about it, no one showed up.
Our original.
But I mean, I goes back, I, I still agree with your point, Frank. You know, how many times do we bring something to town floor? Do we just keep on shoving it down their throats till they agree? I don't know. Depends upon how strongly you feel that this is the right thing for the town, I guess.
Dennis?
Our, our original discussion when we did zoning though was, uh, the decision was not to make Route two A a Route nine, another, you know, business straight through. With all the residences that did exist on the road. We're gonna change the whole atmosphere. That was back several years ago, but.
I don't think you have to worry about that though.
Well, I think that's kind of what you're striving for though.
I think the coffers in the town would kind of like to have that problem.
I mean, if we had that problem, if we have anybody, if we, if we have anybody looking to do that kind of building around here, we should be doing it, especially under.
We don't have that potential knocking at the door.
If we now have the extra, uh, meals tax on, let's try to get as many restaurants in as we can, right?
They want to have.
I know. But I think by, by. I don't know where that forty-two thousand dollars is coming from. I'm trying to think who actually, it's gonna come from, Cumberland.
I, I mean.
These pizza places can't gross that much money.
That's what they're projecting per year, forty-two thousand dollars in extra taxes?
Well, I just don't know, but that's, but let's just say it's one percent, that's one percent of, of the gross revenue basically. So, that means the small businesses in this town would gross over four million dollars. I don't believe it.
Selling food?
You're talking to pizza places, Chinese plates, uh.
Just, just food, just meal, just meals.
Just meals.
Just meal.
Crossroads, you got a lot, you got a lot of rush.
Bonneville Station, that's still operating.
Yeah, but they don't, but they gross peanuts. They gross like two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. They're not grossing big money. This seems like funny. This seems like, that's an awful big number.
What's big money to you?
Hmm?
What's big money to you?
What happens, do you know what? If it's only two thousand, but three hundred thou- uh, two hundred thousand is really only a two thousand, seven, uh, seventeen hundred and fifty dollar tax.
It's actually more than four million because it's only, it's only three quarters of.
I know, I was, I was.
No, I know, I was, I was sitting here cuz I'm like, what actually is it?
No, when I see the numbers, I'm like, I don't know, they came from the state. So, I think it's gonna be Cumberland. It has, look, someone's making a lot of money.
Charlie, does that include, uh, facilities like Camelot? Do they have to charge that tax for?
Yes, that would be meals, yep. So, yeah.
Pizza place.
Pizza place, yeah.
Any prepared, yeah, any prepared foods. The only thing that's excluded, so if you go to Dunkin's and you buy six donuts, once you hit six, then there's no sales or meals tax on that. Because it, it's over six. Uh, but anything under that, uh, like, you know, if things are sealed, uh, candy bar, stuff like that, there's no meals tax. Um.
Probably Charlie, a good general store.
Exactly.
He's moving that coffee every morning. I see that.
Let me tell you, not in the one way. Um. I'm not bitter at all.
Is that already affecting your business?
Should've sold it while you had the opportunity.
Why are you gonna have five donuts now?
Exactly.
But I think.
The place has always been on life support. Now I'm just supporting it that much more. Um.
I think this still has to do with, you have to have so many full-time equivalents to pay sales tax.
This is meals tax though, it's not sales tax. It's meals tax.
But it's in addition to your sales tax, so you're only, instead of charging six point two five, you're charging seven.
Correct.
So, the only services that qualify for that meals tax are the ones that you pay sales tax on. And there's a requirement, maybe when you, before you pay sales. Cuz you just pay sales tax on lots of stuff.
Right. Well, now, if I sell a bottle of soda at the country store, there's no meals tax on it. If I sell a bottle of soda at the cafe, there is meals tax on it.
Depends, cuz you're preparing food.
Correct.
Sell everything out of the machine, you don't have to worry.
Well, with the increase in, um, you know, minimum wage, I'm gonna go with all automation, so then it'll all be machines.
Yeah. Hey, Peaceful Pines, can I help you? How many, eleven bucks an hour I gotta pay? Thirty, thirty thousand dollars last year in payroll for my store that grossed four and a half thousand.
It's going to fifteen very soon, don't, don't worry.
Four and a half thousand bucks.
This is a good business, man.
Yeah. I'm stupid.
Okay, back, back to business.
Alright, sorry.
You made it.
I know.
So, I think we can have a consensus. We're gonna keep this on the, the burner, but probably a back burner and.
I wouldn't call it consensus. I'm not necessarily sure I agree, to be quite honest, but, um.
Wait, what don't you agree with?
But I, I think, I think it, it gives us time, like you said, to, to bring some new information to the people, if, if there is any.
I just think.
To give them a different perspective on it, so that we're not just giving them the same piece of advice again.
And we will, we will help with that, between maps and things like that and getting the information out.
But I'm okay waiting, I'm okay waiting.
Yeah, well, as long as you're okay, cuz I, we, we do a good job of coming to the same. You've got a slightly different perspective, but you're not against us.
No, no, I'm not against it.
Alright, then we're on, we're on board.
And honestly, I would be okay with it being on the spring warrant as well, cuz I think it's, it would be okay to bring it back up, so.
I just remember that woman, you know, so awful, like, I just remember here, in here crying.
No, no, I, I, no, I, I.
I just touched myself, really, it's how ridiculous is that? You know what I mean, really? It just seems like not fair, but.
Yep, no, I, I'm with you, I'm.
I'd be a big heart.
I, I, but I think this is a path we all agree on and that's what we usually do, so let's, let's, let's go the way that makes us all feel okay with it.
Sounds good. Okay, excellent. Um, well, speaking of zoning, well, something else that actually, I was speaking with, um, Mr. Eaton of MRPC. Um, so with the marijuana, um, init- initiative or law or whatever we wanna call it, uh, because we don't have i- in our zoning bylaws. It's kinda like the adult entertainment. If there's not a zone, it can go anywhere. So, it's probably something that we want to start looking at.
I thought we have adult entertainment.
We do, but this is not, I'm saying, it's like an adult entertainment. If, if there's.
You can't put an adult and a marijuana together?
Um, it probably should go together, but, you know. So, I don't know if it's something.
So, we should just probably designate the same area, cuz it's really where no one will ever rest behind my.
Well, I mean, I also think it's something that we need to discuss. If we, we want to work, I mean.
Do you wanna do the?
Hey, maybe I can save the country store.
It'd be a good place.
Do you wanna approve the minutes from the last two meetings and then put that under new business, Charlie?
Uh, would be happy to.
We're actually. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't make a motion. Although this format is nice, Carol. This is, this is clear. Something's different about it.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I have one question, uh. On the, uh, January ninth meeting, did we get something back in writing from Wes regarding Lafayette Road?
We have the email.
The email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, did you print that out, maybe put it in the record?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, it's in the record, okay.
Do you wanna approve the minutes separately?
We're gonna have, because, uh, because I'll be attending.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December twelfth meeting.
So moved.
Do you want to have a second?
No second, good.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm standing.
Kristoff, stand. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, January ninth meeting minute.
Dan, do I have a second?
Yep.
Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Are you doing the? Did you do the December one first?
Yeah.
Just reverse, Kristoff. Yeah, I abstained for the wrong one, so.
Oh.
Put me in as yes on December twelfth and abstain on the, on January ninth. Sorry.
So, we're good? Back to new business?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so, um, when I was speaking with Glenn, he basically discussed that we can, I, I believe we can actually place a six-month moratorium to give us a chance to. Um, discuss and, and decide what we want to do if, you know, if anything. If we don't do anything, it's basically, you know, by right, so.
Yeah, we should definitely do something. What is the adult entertainment, uh, what is our zone, our zoning for that zone?
It's over by John's.
It used to be the back part of my property, but, no, it's a.
Is it just a tiny little spot somewhere?
Well, it's a pretty good chunk of land, but it's, it's not.
It's not buildable.
It's a swamp it was put there.
Yeah.
It's behind, it's between me and the Templeton State Forest, I believe.
It basically, if you don't have a designated zone, then you can.
But we're allowed to basically put a.
A boat, pontoon boat with some girls.
But we can zone a random area and just call it that?
Yeah, well, we, well, we'd have to get board approval, we have to get.
You have to, like, we would normally go through the town and approvals and all that, so yes.
Okay.
So, um, just because, so when I discussed with him, you know, in regards to, you know, obviously there's rules and regs, I mean, just like we do with, you know, solar fields or wind turbines or anything else. You know, it's, it's good to have rules and regs in place.
How do we? So, so do we?
I don't know the actual process. I just wanted to make sure. I had discussed it with him, so I just wanted to make, you know, bring it back to the board and, um, you know.
So, how does the town, well, I guess that's kind of interesting. I mean, I'm just curious how the town people feel, like, it's almost like we should have a public hearing.
Well, I was gonna say, and I think that's something that we, you know, need to do our due diligence and actually get people's input in.
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't.
I mean, if we said.
Popping up everywhere, but that's just, that's just my opinion.
Well, if we, maybe if we. If we said we were gonna put along two A, other people might now be in supportive of our.
No, but I mean, you know, yeah, I, I wouldn't particularly want that popping up everywhere, but.
Or my neighborhood, one of your neighborhoods.
Well, no, I, I think it's kinda, you know, I view it as probably should be handled the same, you know, very similar with alcohol laws, you know, certain places, certain hours, certain, you know.
So, can, so will the, um, will Glenn come out and present, like, if you're a public hearing, would he come out and present?
I would assume so, yes.
It's also.
It's probably what we should do.
It's also a right-to-farm bylaw issue. You know what I mean? We're a right-to-farm bylaw, so depending on what we do, I mean, someone, some, some, you know, uh, horticulturist can come in here and say. You're a right-to-farm community and this is legal en masse, so what right don't I have to do this in RA one or two?
Well, I think this is. Right. I think this is actually, I think it needs to be handled in two separate issues. The retail as well as the, the growing aspect of it. So, I, I think there's, you know.
Oh, you were talking more about retail.
Correct.
Oh, I was thinking.
Cuz personally, I'm against it, but from, but objectively and logically, if we're a right-to-farm community, then we would be welcoming farmers growing this stuff.
That's a good point.
You know, I mean, it's not, it's, again, it's not, it's not my personal favorite, but, but I don't see how we could be a, a, an honest, logical right-to-farm when this is a plant that's grown.
Right.
Another point of view I looked on was that, I think according to what they're looking at is distribution points possibly being package stores. Be a multi-use facility as alcohol and marijuana. You know, they can set up a distribution point there.
Right.
So, you'd have to take that into consideration too.
Right. So, I'm saying, I think there's, there's a lot to it and obviously being so new in the state, it's, it, you know, and I think MRPC will be a great resource for us. And I think they're even in the process of tooling up for this as well, so I don't think they're quite ready for it.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you watch kinda what some of the stuff they've been stalling on a state level, because there's also the federal thing looming. I mean, it's illegal on the federal, you know, so I mean, Colorado's having its day in the sand, in the sun, while the states around it are running, you know, while they're illegally running stuff over the borders. Creating this giant problem for the law enforcement, so I mean, it, federal government can shut it down anytime it wants.
Right.
That's true.
We actually have a lot of information in the office. I can send you, I can send you links.
Excellent.
You know, that marijuana plant can be.
Man, this is a lot. I just don't know, like. Where else would someone came tomorrow and wanted to open up?
It used to be.
Well, so at this point now, the, the, the states actually, they're working on the licensing as we speak, so.
They couldn't get a license to.
Correct, so it's not until.
Incredibly inspect, uh, expensive to.
Get a dispensary license?
Yeah.
With mass?
Correct.
So, that's what mass government is trying to do as a, as a, as a, as a dissuasive tactic, is just make it go expensive through the roof?
I don't think so. I think they're actually just, they're realizing it's a cash cow and they're.
It's a billion-dollar.
Probably a multi-billion dollar, so I don't think they're trying to stop. I think they're trying to.
Capitalize?
Yes.
And I think it's designated differently than agriculture.
Anything can be.
And there's also a three percent tax that goes to the town.
And I.
So, there's a lot, there's a lot of information.
And I think one of the other things that they're, they're kinda looking at is.
Tax to the town if we had a shop here, a retail?
Not a shop, if, if somebody decided to cultivate it, and there's very strict regulations, it can't be seen by the road, it has to be fenced in. It has to have security cameras, it has to, there, there is very strict regulations for those who cultivate it. So, and, and I can send you.
See, Charlie, you jumped too fast on that solar farm.
Why do you think I know as much as I do about this?
Oh, God.
Hey, Farnsworth, it's nice quiet up there.
It's a gateway drug, Charlie.
Um, so, yeah, so I, I think we'll probably get a little bit more information from MRPC, and, uh, I just wanted to, you know, put it on everyone's radar, so we know.
And if we have to zone something, we should.
Yeah, we should be proactive and.
We should really make sure we, we do it perfectly.
We don't wanna be, we don't wanna have somebody telling us what, what to do about this, like we did with the residential, with the contractors in the nineties. Just telling us what they wanted to do with our, our town.
Yep.
We don't wanna do that again.
Yep.
All of a sudden, we'll have lawyers here, saying we're gonna open up here and do this, and then. We should get ahead of it if we can.
So, what, what are the steps we take to put the six-month moratorium, or is that adjusted by right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, so that's something that, you know, I'll do.
So, how, the, the selectmen must know, they must be on top of this too, right?
There's something we could ask.
Can we ask?
Can we ask Carol to look into it?
Yeah, can you ask what they've?
Yeah, and then let's get in touch with.
It's a pretty big issue, and it's places.
In the states, it's July, it's up, July it is. So, we need to do something before July?
So, we, no, cause if we wanted to zone, then we would wanna make sure it hits this year.
I'll send you guys an outline that has the dates on it.
Cause, uh, we only have till February twentieth.
Is this a board of health issue too?
It can be a board of health issue if there's a dispensary or pot shops, depending on how it goes, yeah.
If people are smoking inside or.
How do we wanna proceed with this?
You can smoke inside pot shops.
I think that's probably what we're gonna do is have, you know, a representative from MRPC come out and, and discuss, you know.
Big problem.
And, and get some information and see where we're going with it, so.
Can you arrange that or during one of our meetings?
I think we're gonna have to do something, but we should do it quickly.
Right.
Yeah.
I will send you more information on Thursday, I'll send you the outline with all the dates on it, um.
And I'll be in touch with, with you two to kinda keep things going and, and see what's going on.
Can I ask, so the mor- moratorium for the state is up in July?
Let me go.
Alright. No, I'm really curious, only because if we really had to do something, we would have to do it before.
So, i- if I'm not mistaken, I, I believe that they're in the process, so they just formed the, um, the, the commission. Um, and they're in the process of, I, I don't think they've actually opened the process for permits as of yet, but I believe it's very close. So, I don't know if they're opening the process as of July, or will start issuing permits in July.
Cause they're probably got a bunch of people trying to, you know, grow pot in, um, in Newton, but this is the area where people will wanna do it.
Well, I think this.
People won't wanna do it, on this half of the state.
I mean, obviously, by, by the law, you can grow a certain amount for your personal use at your house. This is for.
Personal use, you're talking about commercial.
Correct, this is for dispensaries as well as, um, you know, the actual commercial growing, um. Thank you. Yeah, so March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, adoption of regulations, guidelines and protocols by the Cannabis Con- Cannabis Control Commission. For the issuance of licenses for recreational marijuana establishments, um. April first is acceptance of applications, June first, they may begin issuing licenses, so as of June first, they could begin issuing licenses.
And so, okay, so now, as, so as of June first, we will not be able to have done anything, especially that would impact zoning unless we did it before. So that, that, so we could.
Oh, okay.
Torium?
Zoning moratoria, the emerging, uh, the emerging area of marijuana regulation present, presents many policy and planning issues for municipal, municipal. Probably need to smoke a little something and start reading if I need to. Issues for municipalities. A zoning moratorium, which would impose a temporary limit on the ability of applicants to locate marijuana establishments within a municipality. Is a powerful tool available to mun- to municipalities to provide additional time to consider how many, blah, 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 blah. Um. We recommend that a municipality not seek to impose moratorium beyond December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. A moratorium may be important if municipality is considering seeking a prohibition or other limitation. Uh, but it may not be able to have a bylaw or ordinance in place before April first. Um, so I think we probably need to get a little bit more clarification.
So, who, how's a moratorium, cause obviously you can have one until December thirty-first?
Are we, you know, are we allowed to?
We recommend that they, that municipalities not seek to impose a moratorium beyond December thirty-first. Oh, December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Right.
Sorry.
Right. So, we can't do anything before April first, they said?
Um.
And we can't do anything technically after?
Important if municipalities considering seeking a prohibition or other limitation, but may not be able to have the bylaw or ordinance in place. I know, I think what they're saying is if you don't think you'll have the law in place by April first, then you could have your moratorium a six-month or up to a year.
So, we should.
You have to have something.
Starts that process. Who changes our bylaws? I'm sorry, I hate to be so ignorant on.
No, no, I, I'm not, I'm not sure either.
Write the bylaw for this, we wanna change our.
Like I said, I, I think this is something that we need to get more information from MRPC as to what we're actually doing.
Because we're not gonna have anything by April first, obviously. And then we should have, we should put the moratorium in place and, and we have this.
The moratorium would probably come from the select board, wouldn't it?
I would think so.
Right, but it may be one of those things that we may be doing.
Make a recommendation.
And then we have a year till the fall, basically, the fall town meeting.
Right. I mean, I think we're kinda falls on the zoning, it might be in our best interest if we kinda do, because we, we usually work on it. So, maybe if we do a little bit more of the homework and work in conjunction with the select board to see, and I'm sure that they'll probably have to have the final say. But, obviously, if we can.
But we should put the moratorium in place as soon as April first is not far, otherwise.
Just so that we actually have the time to, to do the work and make sure that we, we do it right.
Language seems to indicate that it could be prohibited. That we don't have to allow it.
I can see, that's the way I heard what Charlie said, we have, we may have the opportunity to say, we're not gonna allow it.
Mm-hmm.
But I bet that's very trickery, super slow.
Why?
It's how it was worried, it sounded like it was a slippery foot, like you could, you could.
Well, here's the other thing too, is if, if we want to benefit and have any of the tax revenue that's coming in from it, I think we also have to be willing to be open to.
I don't disagree, but I think, but, uh, obviously, you, you would be open to it and I would probably be against it, but, but we would wanna know if it's an option to either.
Correct.
And then we, then we have an open, an open dialogue and make a decision, but I'd wanna know what our options are.
Exactly.
Yeah, 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 okay. I wouldn't be open for it, I wouldn't, I, I can't believe the state passed such a foolish law. You would've thought people were smarter. And if you voted for it, Charlie, I'm sorry. No, really. It's a neurotoxin, doesn't make you smart.
Agreed.
Just saying.
Some people have, some people have extra brain cells to burn, other people don't.
I guess, maybe I just don't have an extra one. Crazy, I think this really.
For the record, I don't indulge.
Yeah, me either, no, no.
I like my liquid, you know, poisons, exactly.
At a younger age.
Yeah, but I just, I don't understand, like, how the state passed, passed that, I really don't.
Um, so, I think.
Pot-smoking liberals.
Um, so, I, I'm hoping that we'll have a lot more information by our next meeting and hopefully be able to either s- begin action on something. Or at least have a clear plan of where we're gonna be going from that point, so.
For the record on the cameras, I agree with marijuana.
You know, cig- when cigarettes first came out, they were billed as being good for your health. First twenty years, cigarettes, that was all they advertised, that they were good for your health.
Actually, it'll keep you calm.
It did, no, it's good for lung health, good for relaxing, good for get through the.
As long as the red wine is still healthy for you.
That's right, that's right, that's right, we'll keep telling ourselves that.
Anything else? I heard bourbon's good for you too, so.
Oh, I have, well, I try, I keep my options open. So, anything, but have anything else?
Next meeting is when?
I don't have a calendar.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
Sounds good.
I won't be here.
That'll be March something or?
Have you one quick thing of new business?
No, February twenty-seventh.
Is there any role that we're playing now that the, the new schools being built? Are we supposed to be doing anything throughout that process?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, I think.
Yeah, I thought we had to help.
I believe that once we've kind of approved everything, it's now in the building inspector's hands to ensure and kind of make sure everything is run, run properly. Uh, I think if there's any major issues that may come up, I think it, it could always be bounced back to the board, and we can always address to make sure that things are, still fall within the. Um.
I, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind reaching out to the building department and or the, the architect or building people and saying, we wouldn't mind seeing a progress thing. I don't wanna bring up, make a whole, you know, we've, we've already been through the whole thing, now it's happening though. And, uh, and, you know, we had certain, like we do on all projects, we had certain concerns that we put down. And they answered those a certain way, I wouldn't wanna see us just not think about it for twelve, fourteen months, change orders come up. And then the, the original things that we burden the project with, uh, and burden is the wrong word, that we stipulate on the project, uh, just get ignored.
Is there a, is there a clerk of the works for the town that's overseeing the whole project? Or is that just a building inspector?
I can talk to Rich for you.
Yeah, because that may be the person to talk to, Kristoff, if there's somebody that's designated as the clerk of the works, that's overseeing the whole project, that interfaces with the architect, that interfaces with. The, the contractor, that way, we're not all trying to interface with those people.
Yeah.
We interface with this one person and say, hey, here are our concerns, how are these, this is what we had stipulated, how are things moving forward?
And, and I'm not trying to cause conflict or.
No, I think it's good to ask.
It's moving forward, you know, we're, I, I understand, you know, we all know what our own individual opinions are, but, but we do have the, the, this is. We are responsible for helping to make sure these things are done the best way they can be.
I do agree with you, cause I, I have some, you know, long-term concerns and things that I'm, you know, wanna make sure that we kinda stay on top of and.
And some of the townspeople, we told some of the townspeople some stuff and, 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 like, you know, about the drainage and the easements. And all that stuff that we, we said, we had the concern, the townspeople had the concern, and the contractor said he would honor it.
Correct.
Right.
You know, I don't remember all the details, but it just, I, I feel like if I was one of those people that was in here and it was our word saying to these guys. Like, can we, can you help these people out, you know, I, I wouldn't want our word to be at, at stake.
We should make sure we keep, you know, open dialogue between, you know, obviously, we're all in the same department, so I mean, I think it would be really good to be able to stay on top of that. And, you know, kinda keep track of how things.
In a positive way.
Is the police station project also moving forward, or was it just a?
Unknown.
The what?
Police station. The police station.
I think he asked.
Low increase in price.
The cost increase has held up.
Fifty percent increase.
I'm just saying, because a lot of the drainage, a lot of those things that were part of the school, were part of the police station, that was all put together into one. And if you're only doing one, how does that affect the other?
Now they're not doing it.
Now they're not doing it, okay.
Chief Bennett is. Chief Bennett has a plan, I believe he's bringing it before the town floor, I think, you have heard it? He, I've, he's told me his detailed plan twice, but I, it was too complicated for me to understand, so I.
I was just curious.
I think he's gonna re, he's trying to, he's trying to breathe some new life into it, I mean, they have a lot of their own monies that they can use, which is a big factor. Um, and then he's gonna try and put, put it before the floor, town floor.
I've heard a few things, and I know he's, he's working on trying to see if they can reduce some costs on the building of that and.
This is another example of short-term planning, we're gonna be needing something additional with our fire departments in the upcoming years. And we also have our rescue squad over in the attic of the falls of fire station, which also needs space.
I completely agree with you.
Need to build a complex.
Talk about short-term planning.
All of them.
And why would we sell a building or land that's centrally located in town that could've been utilized for that, but again.
I know that's too late now, but.
Alright, sorry to hold you gentlemen up.
Nope, no, all good.
Make your motion to adjourn?
Second.
I guess we're adjourned?